I'm getting worse to me, I'm sorry. I'll just sit here. I'm in there with you. I'm trying to... It doesn't appear so. I would say that's a... All right. Come here. She pointed right at my seat. Jane Pope.
Bradley.
Erin Cook.
Here.
Bill Burner.
Here.
Mike Lawrence.
I'm here.
Mayor Holcraft.
I'm here.
Leslie Votol.
Here.
Mayor Carr.
Here.
And myself.
Any announcements? Uh, Erin Pope, me?
Yeah, I was contacted by you at the downtown business center, and Pat mentioned as well at the last meeting about having a meeting with the board and the property owners of downtown buildings and business owners. So I just basically set up the meeting for anybody that wanted to talk. Maybe, Pat, would you like to start it? I don't know.
Okay, can I interject one thing? I know who you are, but when others get up to talk, if you'll tell me your name, please, before you start, so I can get...
A lot of us are going to talk, talking like five minutes, we have enough time to get in. You've got to count me.
Okay. I just have, just basically, some introductory remarks. Yes, I think at the last council meeting, I brought up the concept of having an open meeting with some of our downtown merchants and property owners. And over the past, I would say, ten, twelve years, we've all noticed a distinct difference in the downtown. And I think we need to thank the city for that. There have been tremendous amounts of investment in the downtown, including the streetscape, including properties that have been rehabbed, ivy tech, you name it. And we're very appreciative of all the improvements that have been made. But we still have some unresolved issues. And every day, I'm very fortunate to get to work with business and property owners who are working very, very hard to try to resolve those issues. And I think this is the opportunity today for them to speak to you and address the problems that we are having down there and the issues, and hopefully, we can all work together to find a solution.
Dennis and Al.
Al Schrand. Al Schrand with Hidden Treasures Gift Shop.
What had you stolen last night?
S-C-H-R-A-N-D.
Okay. Thank you.
We, as Pat discussed, we got together last Thursday, and we sort of formed a new group called The Business Owners of Downtown Lawrenceburg, for the purpose of working with City Council along with Main Street, hopefully Hollywood Casino, and the New Events Center, and playing a major role in working with each one of you, because we feel like we're the eyes and ears of the community. We deal with the public every day, we deal with the customers every day, the visitors in this town every day. We see where they come from. We have one major attribute that we have is that we can give that small town love to the customer, what they don't get in big cities and what they don't get in big department stores. And everybody that comes in our store is our friend. And we know what they want, they talk to us. We're their eyes and ears of Lawrenceburg, pretty much. And I think every store owner that you see here promotes this town like it's their own town. It is our own town. Some of us are not locals, some of us aren't born and raised in Lawrenceburg, but we all feel like this is our home. That's how much we love it down here. This meeting that we had, we joined together for the betterment of this community, to express our passion and needs, and hopefully play a major role in rebuilding the economic structure of our downtown. I wanted to let you know that there are, right now, twenty-three businesses that are joining this group, and I'm sure there'll be more. And real quick, I'll read off who those businesses are. They are Adams Art and Supply, Danny's Classic Cafe, Bebs and Bubs America Cafe, which will be opening here soon, Bill's Shoe Repair, these are all in alphabetical order, Blacklist, Bobo's and the Levy, Books on High, BPS Plus Seating, Campbell's Custom Sewing, Cafe Delights, Cyclops Bikes, Durbin Bowl, Hidden Treasures Gift Shop, Indicom, Interiors Embellished, Jackalope Printing and Design, Jasmine Orchid Cafe, Little Anks, Pinpoint Printers, Quarters Garden, Riverwatch Restaurant, Trading Post, and Waltz Photography. Of these business owners that I read off, probably twenty of the twenty-three were there. And I think the group wants to continue having meetings, because we realize in one meeting, we can never accomplish what we need to get accomplished. And hopefully, working with Main Street, we can play a major role in rebuilding our town. Right now, we're worried about the Events Center. We all think it's an excellent opportunity for us, we're all looking forward to it opening, but sorry to say, we think it's a one-and-done type of deal. You'll have a convention here, you'll have people come down, and they'll walk around town, and there's nothing else there for them. We need to rebuild downtown, we need more retail, we need more family restaurants, we need more entertainment, we need something for these people to do. With that in mind, we all feel the urge to need to work together so we can help market and maintain our current group of storefronts. We realize that these issues don't get resolved overnight. We also want you to know that we are planning on becoming more proactive with City Council, Main Street Lawrenceburg, and as I said, the Hollywood Casino and Events Center. And here are just a few of the points that we talked about last Thursday that I'm going to share with you, what we feel we need, and that we're going to continue working on in our future meetings. We need family-friendly restaurants and activities. We need to bring the family back to downtown Lawrenceburg. We need new retail, we need entertainment. We need marketing promotions of downtown businesses, a good website is a great start. We need to start thinking outside the bubble. What I mean by that is, a lot of easily are all born and raised in downtown Lawrenceburg, and everybody knows about Main Street or Walnut Street and High Street, but people who live twenty minutes away do not. I'm from Bridgetown, for example. Most of my friends and most of the people up there know where Hollywood's at, they know where Aurora's at, they know where Rising Sun's at. They don't know downtown Lawrenceburg, because they never have to turn left on Walnut Street. So somehow, we have to start marketing that. What this street offers compared to other towns, I mean, we've all been down over the line, we've been to Newport and Levy, we've been to places like that, everybody says they'd rather come here. People that come here would rather come here. This has a lot more to offer. Big reason is, the place is safe. It's beautiful down here, you've done a great job on the streets and the sidewalks, the landscaping, people enjoy walking down here. It's a great town. Other places, you've got to worry about walking, period. Other things that we want to talk to you about are future grant programs, revolving loans for the businesses downtown. The renovation of the buildings that we have down here, so we can bring new retail and new business down here. Make downtown inviting to the visitors. That's a number-one priority. And finally, economic development, which is the retaining and development of the business that we have here. You have a great nucleus. And for the first time, I think we all got together last week, a lot of us didn't know each other. Okay? But we all seem like we're on the same wavelength, we all know what we want, we all want to stay down here, okay? And we need your help. And along with that, I hope you need our help. I think it's time that we all pull together and work together. And we've got a great nucleus here. You can see the group here, and not everybody's here, a lot of them couldn't make it, but I want to open up and let them talk as well if they'd like to. Thank you.
Anybody want to go?
I'll get up for a minute. John Davis, business owner down here, investor down here. I have had the pleasure of rehabbing some of the properties downtown, opening up new businesses with my son, Bebs and Bubs here hopefully shortly and soon, we need something that's a family-oriented type thing. To kind of pick up on Alice, part of it is, we've got a lot of needs down here in downtown, and this winter's been really hard on all of us, especially the small retail business owners and that. You guys have been saying you want to do something for downtown, and I know we've got a larger area we need to take care of, there's no doubt about that. But I think the things you heard from Alice, some of the family things we want to try bringing down here, I mean, all restaurants can be family-friendly, we're going to try and encourage your kids and stuff to come in here, we want to get other stuff downtown. Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not a resident, I've been a resident down here, other than for the last eight years, and I've seen all the possibilities, which is why I've taken some of the buildings I've picked up and started rehabbing. And I think if you've seen them, you probably know that I take that very seriously. Some of the improvements we've done have been very costly. I look at Paul Seymour, he's kind of my poster child from the last couple of weeks here, I mean, he considered a piece of property, which unfortunately, he didn't pay a hundred thousand dollars for, like some of the properties that I have, and then put two hundred thousand into it. And we heard how upside-down it was on the improvements and stuff he had to put into his property. I mean, we've got to listen to those things, because those are the real facts we're facing, regardless of who owns those properties, whether it be a landlord or somebody inside. We've got to find a place to work together to help improve downtown and to turn these buildings around, whether it be a leasehold improvement-type thing, or low-interest loans, or get back into something where we can start getting some of these storefronts and stuff, so that they're attractive enough, so business would like to come in and move into downtown. All I can see of downtown, from what I've seen in the past, was pictures of Jay Meyer, Jim, who works for me, who's been pulling up on the internet and through yearbooks, and seeing all the stores that were up and down Walnut Street, on High Street, multiple confectionaires, clothiers, women's things, toys, ten-set-and-dime stores, restaurants, bars. I mean, we face a challenge down here, but it's not something we can't overcome. We have this incredible facility down here that's being built, this fifty-one million dollar hotel, and we're going to have thousands of people coming into downtown Lawrenceburg. And just as Alice stated, we'd like some places for these folks to be coming to, but more so that, regardless of that opened up or not, I want a place that I can bring our families down here, my friends, someplace to hang out, someplace to shop, someplace to go out and have dinner, family, kids, taking advantage of the beautiful bike trail we have, and the walking thing that we're getting ready to do with regard to the historic plaques in downtown. We've got to start doing some stuff downtown to try to get some additional retail down here, so we have a draw to come downtown. We've got some great signings that have been put up down on Fifty now, haven't been successful as far as getting a sign over the state yet, around Fifty itself, but we've got some new things going on at the entrance of East to Walnut Street. And how many years does that take us to get that done? It's been a long time, a long time. Now, we've got a sign down there welcoming Nick Redbell back, isn't that fantastic? In fact, he will be at a wine walk this Friday night, I hope you come by and get your picture taken with him at probably AJ's place. We've got a lot of great things going on, and all these merchants are here because they really care. I mean, I love this town. I live down here. You know, and the properties we're working on, I mean, I wish I could, when I had the Edward Jones property, where you see Edward Jones there now, I looked for a long time to try to find retail. And I think the problem was, is that we didn't have the resources back then to really try to go out and selectively attract and try to recruit some of these, and we have to be careful, we have to try to attract those things. And Mike, I love service, because obviously, Edward Jones is a service. Okay? And I've got a really good, solid, and he's a great community guy, if you've met him, you know him. Kevin goes out and meets everybody, greets everybody, he volunteers, he's really involved in downtown. But do I want more retail, and would I prefer to put retail on that spot? Yes, I would have. There aren't a lot of choices out of Fifty, I mean, most of it's all fast-food stuff. I think it'd be nice to get some non-fast-food, non-chain, some unique stores down here, things we don't have, because there aren't a lot of the choices in Lawrenceburg to shop, there really aren't. We don't really have a lot of good restaurants. I mean, the only restaurant that serves like a steak is Whiskies. Where else do you go? There aren't many other places like that. And we've got a number of properties that are ready to be fixed up, but the question is, how do we get these landlords? And I don't have the answers to these, by the way, I mean, we're looking for help here, too. We've got people who own quite a bit of property in Lawrenceburg, that we can't get them to move on fixing up this, I can't get them to paint the columns of the Walnut Theater. I've got the money, I mean, we'd give them five hundred dollars at Main Street if we just give them, we can't get people to invest in their own, they're sitting there vacant, boarded up. And the question is, how do we get them to move from that? And we've talked about this a little bit, too, but maybe we need to pass some kind of ordinance down here on property maintenance that is enforced, so that if the buildings aren't fixed up on the outside or on the interiors, that somehow, there's some action that can be taken on those properties to get it done. Because when you have people who are unwilling to make any moves themselves, how do we make any progress down here? I mean, it's not that, do it in such a way that encourages them to invest their own private money, but maybe we need a little help, just like in Paul's case. I mean, I wish we could have given Paul a lot more money. Paul deserves a lot more money. He took out, thank God, wouldn't you pay for that building, Paul?
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars. Okay? Hell, if I had gone and bought buildings for a thousand dollars, I'd be able to put a whole lot more money in those buildings. Unfortunately, when you buy them at straight retail, it's kind of hard to put that kind of money into those properties. You're so far upside-down, if he's upside-down, buying it for a thousand, how far upside-down do you think I am in my properties? A lot. And the trouble is, is we've got a lot of properties downtown that need to be fixed. And all I'd like to see is some kind of a sharing-type thing, which we're the property owner, and I know it always becomes a personal thing, and I wish we would be able to figure out a way to get away from that, so we can move on, but I, you know, maybe if we work together, we can maybe do some of that, because everybody needs to contribute a little bit more, and everybody needs to work a little bit harder. And quite frankly, we all need to get along a little bit better. You know? The failure point, the name column, that's something, when I go to other meetings and see like that, and see how frustrating it is for you guys up there, can you imagine how frustrating it is for us out here? I mean, we want you guys to be progressive and move on, and I know there's a lot of issues that we were trying to solve, and thank God, and I appreciate that, too. There's a lot of things that are being addressed today that probably will not be addressed for a long time, and they are. But can we, at least at some point, all of us in here, I think all of these folks here, they're on board, they want to move forward. They're invested down here, they want to make this a great downtown again. And we've got a lot of properties that are waiting to be fixed up, and I know we've got some we're going to be doing here in the spring with those six or seven projects we're going to be taking on. We're hoping that's going to start hopefully attracting some business coming in here, but even if the business came in here, they still have to deal with the leasehold improvements on the property, even if the landlord's not going to do it. The business doesn't have anything to move into. There's shells with bad HVAC, no insulation, bad plumbing, structurally, Paul, you probably can talk about that as well as anybody in here, about that, you're almost building it from the inside out, if you take an existing building. He'd probably do the smartest thing he could have by tearing the entire interior of that building out of there, and just start trying to save the face. Although, I suspect the face of it looks ten times better than it did, after he got finished with it, than it did many, many years back, because it's kind of the work that Paul does. But we need that same kind of look on every piece of property downtown, and how do we get there? I know there's an issue about just handing out money, hey, believe me, I understand that. So how do we do it, so there's an investment by the owners, and Mike, I think you talked about it, too, I think it was, I mean, you've got to start it, you know, hey, put some seed in the game, you pay two-thirds, we pay a third, or a third, whatever the ratio is. Maybe some of the owners of these properties might be willing to do it, maybe offer the same type of arrangement to maybe a new business coming in here, who might want to locate them to piece of property and put those leasehold improvements on that property. We really need to talk about this revolving loans, too, and any kind of assistance that can be given to these business owners, even on a short-term basis, because many of them are hanging on by their fingernails. And I don't know how to do that, I wish Main Street, we're not in position to do loans. If we were, and we had funding to do that, we probably could be a resource to do that, but I don't know if we really want to get in that business. I'd rather have the city do that, quite frankly. What's that?
Maybe the city shouldn't get in that business neither.
Who, the city?
Yeah.
Maybe not. The question is, what's the result if you don't do something? I guess, the question is, what do you want for downtown? That's really, I mean, you say you want to do something for downtown, but...
Well, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
First of all, I try to support all the downtown businesses I can, you know, myself. You said there's twenty-three businesses?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me how many of those twenty-three businesses have had assistance from Lawrenceburg in a way of either a loan, a grant, rent paid?
I don't have that list, but I'd like that same information.
Because, you know, if there's fifteen, eighteen, twenty-three, I don't know, that's had some kind of assistance, I would think it's hard to say, well, Lawrenceburg hasn't tried to help.
Well, I'm not saying you didn't try to help them. I'm not even suggesting that.
But, I mean, at the same time, I mean, you've heard me say, property owners put in two-thirds, the city put in a third, I don't have a problem with things like that, but to just hand out, or to, you know, keep funding somebody's business to stay in business, it just can't happen. I mean, I'm in business, I've had a loan from the city, everybody I'm sure knows it's been all of this debt, I paid it back, it's a loan, and that's fine, I have not a problem with loans, if it's feasible. But to expect to have your business funded, 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 you know, people can't expect that. They have to, as business owners, they have got to bring the customer. I mean, where my business is, I'm not on the beaten path, I have to bring my customer.
I don't disagree with that. Unfortunately, downtown has gotten to a point where it's been difficult to even drive traffic into downtown. We've been almost, I know I was talking about the marketing of downtown, and I know some stuff's being worked on right now, and that's, thank God, I mean, that's good steps to do that. I mean, websites are great to work on, but websites don't necessarily drive cars. You've got to get people to do that, so we've got to get reasons for people to come down here. Sure, please.
Could I help you out, maybe?
Yeah, quick.
I have got...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure.
Is there any way you can get that list of those twenty-three businesses, who has had assistance, whether it be a loan, a grant, rents paid, what assistance they've had?
I would say we'll take a little research, because Lawrence, I think we probably Jackie's helping out a little bit, because there's been checks. All the grants, this has been where Main Street's taken hits, and you know, they've taken a lot of heat on this, but all the grants during that period of time when the city was giving out that five, ten, fifteen, and twenty thousand dollar grants, somehow, we got that hung on around our neck. Okay, and I don't know what the process was to even approve those monies, to go to who and where and where, you know, unfortunately, it was handed out so easily, because I would have had a lot more strings on it, I've been in business for twenty-five years, and I would never hand out money the way the city does. I mean, you've got to look at what the results are, and I don't care if it's a grant for handing money to a business, or it's handing it out to a charity or a nonprofit, you better look at what's going to be the outcomes of that, and if they can't prove the outcomes to you, when they come back to you the next year, guess what you don't do? You don't keep on refunding something that gets no results. And business, quite frankly, business is the same way. And you have high expectations, I feel the same way that you do. I don't want to just hand out money and not have it do something. And it's a matter of having a business hang on that shouldn't be in business to begin with. Sometimes, that's why I like watching the sharks, I like to watch the sharks on TV. Basically, they give the people the hard facts. Okay? And one guy, Mr. Wonderful, he said, "You need to take that dog behind the barn and shoot it." Okay? And there's some of those things you need to do every so often, actually, the business doesn't belong there. But it gives us an opportunity to attract maybe the businesses we can use down here that have some business background, might have some capital, have the wherewithal, want to work the business, have the attitude, has the customer service. I mean, have you guys walked into some of the businesses in downtown sometimes? You felt very welcome sometimes, all of them? Sometimes. And unfortunately, that's a thing that needs to change, too. We need to change the whole dynamics of downtown, we need to be that downtown-friendly, but I think everybody understands stress right now, it's been a little hard to do that. I mean, we've been in a little bit of chaos in Lawrenceburg. You probably don't see any of it. No. So, but anyway.
I got a comment, John.
Go ahead.
Along with what he's asking, of all these people that want to participate in your program, the actual person that owns the building, I'd like to know that information, and also the person that may be leasing or renting the building, I want that information.
Okay.
And then, how many times, let's say, for an example, a business owner owns the building and has gotten a twenty thousand dollar grant for the business that came in, the business only survives six months and is gone. Do we have any record of how many?
You know, because we weren't, I was personally involved in those twenty thousand, fifteen... Pat, do you have any? Do we have information on those businesses that the city gave money to, and how long they stayed after we gave the money?
Well, I can talk about myself.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Sharon Hurst, and I have interiors embellished, and I've started and closed three times. I got a ten thousand dollar grant in two thousand and seven. The problem is, I don't have a customer base to support me being down here. The last two months I was open, my gross income was a hundred dollars. Now, that wasn't, the article might have paid five dollars for it, or whatever. There's just not enough customers coming to the downtown, we're a sleepy little town. I attended the meeting with the other businesses, and this is what I got from it. If I may read this. The downtown Lawrenceburg Business Group, as we will be called, met two twenty-seven fourteen. Our purpose was to create a wish list of things that could help grow the downtown business district. The vision was to transform our sleepy town into a mecca of retail shops and entertainment establishments, a destination. The close proximity to Interstate two seventy-five and the interstates close to it, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-one, can easily attain Lawrenceburg as a destination. In getting our streets of walnut and height lined with retail shops, thus creating a rich shopping experience for our customers, we need to identify the businesses that will be housed in the upcoming shops. Okay, I don't know. The buildings will need to be renovated and repaired. The facades should be done with the period style of the building and kept in mind. The interiors would need to have upgrades of HVAC, electrical, plumbing, some sheet rock. The Lawrenceburg officials have done a superior job of attending to the infrastructure of the city, the streetlights, sidewalks, live, healthy flowers. That was a biggie, to have real flowers in our flower plants. And Mrs. Kreider, in her first month as Main Street Director, got that done. It means so much. And they're taking care of, they're watered. You guys have done trash receptacles at different places, so there's not strewn all over, and underban utilities. Our town is an original eighteen hundreds quaint village that many developers are recreating this look in places like Pigeon Forge and so forth. People are drawn to history and buying things with a story. Our desire would be to recruit shops, artisans that take old and breathe, that's, this is my opinion, take old and breathe new life into it. Maybe an orphan headboard and an old panel door would be creating a new vintage bench. The same would go for jewelry artists. They would take time-worn jewels, and with newer upcycle materials, would have a new and fresh look. Floral shops with a flair for design, wedding boutiques, culinary shops that have spices, maybe cooking classes. Shop owners can create and sell their wares, shop owners that can create... Our town is an original 1800s quaint village that many developers are recreating this look in places like Pigeon Forge and so forth. People are drawn to history and buying things with a story. Our desire would be to recruit shops, artisans that take old and breathe, that's, this is my opinion, take old and breathe new life into it. Maybe an orphan headboard and an old panel door would be creating a new vintage bench. The same would go for jewelry artists. They would take time-worn jewels and with newer upcycle materials, would have a new and fresh look. Floral shops with a flair for design. Wedding boutiques, culinary shops that have spices, maybe cooking classes. Shop owners can create and sell their wares, shop owners that can create their, they don't order from a catalog, would be interesting mix for the downtown. A committee to audition people to come down here to be in our buildings, and I think some of the committee members could be existing businesses. Tools that we talked about at the meeting to get the word out of our shops was a map. We need a map that says, "I'm down here at 128 Walnut, she's down here." And that, it just can be informational, it doesn't have to be white, glossy, pictured papers, just informational. That should be updated monthly, so that when we get new businesses, they have, they're listed on there. A flyer that we can give to potential shop owners, we see them, and it would have contact to, if you're interested in doing a shop down here, you need to have pictures and a description of what you do, things like that. The shops need to be artfully displayed and done. We need to have eye candy for the customers. If they don't buy anything, they will have spent a nice day looking at the things that you have in our shop. We talked about customer service, we need to be better at that. We can maybe pull if I'm going to have furniture delivered, it's somebody else, we can hire one guy that will deliver things to a 100-mile radius, 50-mile radius maybe. Classes for customer service that we would mandatorily attend quarterly, possibly. We talked about marketing of our shops through social media, which is free, and we need to post and share, and that can get the word out to people, that's free. The meeting was an hour and a half, and it was the first one. So we can solve everything. What we did talk about, we needed money. And we talked about possibly tapping in a request, we don't have anything for the 10-county monies that are given to different counties, that we can help Lawrenceburg through grants and low-interest loans. And thank you for your time and understanding in growing Lawrenceburg.
By the way, this is a great group of people here, and even those folks who have not been able to attend today, they're also very big on keeping this downtown and growing it. Not everybody's going to fail, I think one of the things we found going to some of the seminars we've been going to, is that you have got to understand that we're transitioning from the town we used to have, all the business we had, downward, dropped almost nothing, and now we're going back up again, trying to reinvent and rebrand, because that's one of the things we don't have right now either. We don't have a brand for Lawrenceburg. I mean, what are we? We need to figure that out too, because that'll help the downtown area as well. She was talking about the grant, the grant for the 10-county grant, I don't know if that's the appropriate place to be, if it is, that's a great thing to do, maybe tap into something and have a focus on downtown. But one of the things this, going to these meetings, it kind of taught us, there's a tremendous amount of information and data now available through Purdue. The other thing is, is if you're going to try to reinvent a downtown, one of the things you need to be patient on and understanding of is that you've got to be able to accept failure. Small businesses have such a high rate of failure, that you just have to understand that even though you go out and you try to do everything you possibly can, and even some funding, some assistance, whatever it might be, that you're still going to have failures. But at the end of a period of time, we will eventually end up with a nest of very solid businesses in our area. But you have to understand that not every business is going to succeed, and you can't look at that as, we shouldn't continue doing this program, or doing any program, because the businesses have failed. We can't give up. We've got to continue to fight, and this is part of what we need your help with. I hope this is just the beginning of many sessions where we can try to figure out, how do we do this? Because I think what we do downtown helps our area too. This isn't just about downtown. If we can make this downtown really good, it's going to spread out to the other areas of 50 and other parts of Dearborn County. I mean, so why, this is not just about us down here, this is not just about us only, we're looking at far bigger things than that, and we're also going to provide tremendous support for this, we'll do the Hotel and Convention Center. I mean, the more people we can draw in here, it's going to provide economic income to the surrounding area. They're not all going to be downtown, they're going to be the hotels on 50, they're going to be shopping and taking trips and tours and all kind of stuff like that, but why not have an area which they, when they get out of their hotel, they can walk around, they can go have a beer, they can go have a cigar, they can go buy a souvenir for their family, they can go have a nice meal at a local restaurant, they can sit and have conversation. Well, and then they can expand out from there, but let's give them something down here that they can do when they're down here. I mean, this is, I think this is a big step, and I know you've got political consequences at this convention center, but, you know, guys, this is a lot of money sitting there, and I think we need to, I want Paul to keep on buying buildings and keep on investing them, and so, that's it, you guys will work with us. Does anybody else here have anything they'd like to...
I'd like to comment, by far.
Go ahead.
On what you said about Paul. I can't imagine with what was just done with him investing all his money in a building and turn around and giving $25,000, for instance, on a building that they're not spending a dollar on, why would he want to buy any more buildings and invest his money? Why?
Because I'm saying we should have programs like...
If I was him, I'm just speaking, if I owned this building, I'd just let my building fall in, eventually someone's going to come and give me some money.
Is that what you want to, is that what you want to go for though? To allow buildings to collapse? And not to have businesses down here?
You have to cut it off.
But we've spent so much money...
Should we spend the remaining money Lawrenceburg has?
Why fix up the streets? Why put in new sewers and drains, and why...
Because Lawrenceburg...
Why keep on hiring more of our city employees?
I don't hire any more city employees, not me. But the streets and that infrastructure, Lawrenceburg, that's their problem. They're supposed to do that for the people.
But if there are any people down here, we can save that money.
It's still...
We don't need sidewalks, we don't need any of this stuff. We put all our money towards somewhere else, put it out somewhere else. We don't need anything downtown.
Maybe.
And I think we should, and I think we should have more money for folks like Paul. We don't have that many people in town that are willing to invest in the city, put their money in.
And you've heard me say, if somebody put up two-thirds, I don't have a problem to sit here as long as the city has the money to invest in.
If the idea is to come up with a plan, and if that plan is solid, maybe we can get some investors from the outside who are willing to do that as well.
I'd like to make a comment or suggestion. I think the 10-county grant program should be opened up to businesses in downtown Lawrenceburg. I believe the deadline for this year is March 31st, 2014? Deadline?
It hasn't been set.
It hasn't been set. But I suggest that anybody that can come up with a reasonable plan and write a grant and present it before the 10-county grant program, maybe the money will flow. But then I agree with Mike also, that they have to have some money involved. You know, they're going to put up this much money, and would you please assist us with giving us this much more money? I think we ought to start hitting these buildings downtown, getting them rehabbed and getting them structurally sound and safe, so whoever owns them can put a business in there, or have a business come in and lease from them. And try to keep the leases at a reasonable rate where they'll be able to continue and survive, at least for a year, to see how everything goes after the event center opens.
That would be a good start. Paul, I got a quick question for you, since you're sitting there kind of quiet tonight, which is unusual, but Mike's plan of the two-thirds, one-third, I mean, is that sufficient for you to, considering the amount of money that you've got to put in these buildings to bring them back? I mean, I don't care who owns the building, the building's going to fall down if we don't figure out a way to at least repair the guts. We don't necessarily mean the interior, but just to get new HVAC, plumbing, the very basics, the energy stuff. I mean, I think as a town, do you want to put some of our money towards energy efficiency type things? Does that ratio work for you?
I, I'll talk after you're done.
Okay. Then I shall sit down. Any other questions for me?
I've got five minutes away from me.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
That's fine. We've only got 20 minutes left, you might have to...
I think, we have two dilemmas down here, okay? And the challenges we have come out of the two dilemmas. As far as business is concerned, it's hard to get more retail, because we don't have a lot of existing retail, we don't have a lot of existing retail, and we can't get more retail, because we don't have foot traffic. And because we don't have businesses, we can't get foot traffic. So, that's kind of a cycle, okay? We've got to break through that cycle, that's one challenge. The other challenge we have is with the buildings, okay? If you buy a building, it costs so much to renovate it, that by the time you go to lease it, you have to get some of your investment back, so the rents go so high that a small business can't afford it. If you say, "Okay, I'm going to sell my building," good luck. Who are you going to sell it to? Because the person that buys it is going to be in the same dilemma you are. So those are the two dilemmas that we have. If we can find some answers to those two vicious cycles, if we can break those cycles, then I think we can make some progress. And I think any plan we have, Jane, I think needs to revolve around dealing with those two challenges, and I think we should be able to roll it up, hopefully, into one plan, and it would be nice if we could submit to the 10-county grant program. That way, you know, we would be tapping into some resources that you all have already allocated.
Can I ask a question? One thing you said, foot traffic. I've said that for two years since I've been there.
It's tough.
Now, in your opinion, for foot traffic, would you build senior housing, or would you build residential homes, whether it be houses, apartments, or what, that could be of any age?
My opinion, it's just my opinion, I think one of the secrets to downtown is bringing more families and more residents down here. I think we need to be cognizant of the needs of our seniors, and in some ways, living in a downtown area is very convenient for them, but they probably will not add as much vitality to the downtown as building residential and having families and young professionals come down here.
Anybody else?
I'd like to answer, Mike. I think if we do a destination, we show off the architecture, the 1800s, the people are pattern recreating, and blasting it out in the tri-state areas, ladies, I'm grabbing ladies, would come down for a day of fun, festivity, and food, and we can recruit shops of that nature. We do, my sister and I have two committee members for the Over the Moon Committee.
There's a microphone, pick it up.
We have, at the Agnor Hall, pardon?
Could you turn the microphone, please? I think Cindy, your next, you have to hand it up first.
No, come up, Sharon.
Come up to the microphone, please.
I forget what I'm thinking about by the time I get up.
You love public fun and festivity.
We have, we do the Over the Moon Committee, Market, at Agnor Hall, at the Fairgrounds. We started out recruiting, not recruiting, we attained about 1,000 customers. We've gone to over 2,000 customers, but we have fun things for ladies, we have food and kids' little things, sewing, furniture, and it's becoming almost a cult of following for us. So I think we could do that in our downtown with some of the shops.
Can I ask you something? Because I know before you were talking about your growth sales, it wasn't very good. Can you tell me what you do to bring customers here, how do you promote your business, what do you do to bring customers to your business?
Well, I've had radio, newspaper, and we were not successful. There's an indifference that clouds, in my opinion, Lawrenceburg. I think we've had shops that have started and stops, and people, customers don't take us seriously, so I don't have enough money to change my marketing alone in the downtown. I need more shops that...
Can I tell you what I do for mine? It doesn't cost me a penny.
I have Facebook.
Besides mine, I do a little bit on Facebook. But you know, in my retail, 80% of my business is from Craigslist. What does that do for downtown Lawrenceburg? Nothing. Sure, to bring people to your business. Yeah, they buy online, they're not buying here. No, my customers, 90% of those 80%, come here. I bring them here.
I should do, I should do more.
You don't, sure you do.
Well, I mean...
Sure you do. I sell brake controllers on Craigslist, I sell a lot of little bitty fiddly things, $10 items, and I bring them to Lawrenceburg. I'm just giving suggestions, and it's free. It's the best thing I've ever done in my life, for my business, and it was free.
I thought I'd get up here so that I don't run out of time. I'm Cindy Nelson, I was born and raised on Walnut Street, I saw you look at your watch. I work right there, and I live right there, so I am always here. And I do have a saying about that, when I tell people I was born and raised here, I don't need a passport to stick my foot in my mouth, I have a right to, because I was born here, just so you know. So, I have a different, maybe a little different slant on this. You have a great group of people here who care about this community, who care about downtown, who want it to do well, and it has the potential. Kind of got some not easy answers necessarily. Cindy Taylor, Sharon, Pat, John, Maya, we've been on Strategic Planning Committee, we've identified many and many of these same issues, and I think Grant, that kind of got transferred over to a committee with Grant. Maybe the difference now is that event center, because there's this impetus to do better, to look better, to give more, to succeed, and that gives us that potential. You know, I come to all these meetings, and I sat the one, the only one that's really bothered me, that we gave Brookville $400,000 for their movie theater, when we have two theaters that are not functioning, and a downtown that could use that $400,000. It's, you know, it's good news, bad news. We helped another community, that's a positive. But walk outside and look at our town, we need it here as well. You know, however you choose to do that, you have a group law and a reason. We just need to get your backing, your participation in what we're trying to accomplish. And in saying that, one of my perspectives about this is that I would like to see all of you involved in things we do down here. Some of you do, some of you don't. But we host events in Lawrenceburg, and we successfully bring people here. We need you to share that with us. We want people to see that you are as involved in the community as we are. And in saying that, we have a line walk this Friday night, and you know, this is my baby, and I want AJ to jump up here. John Davis sort of said something that he shouldn't have, because I wanted this, I wanted this to come to you from this source, but we have a line walk this Friday night, and that's a great event in Lawrenceburg. I have tried to reach all of you at different times to do this, I have now converted Mr. Lawrence. He and his wife are coming down, they're not drinkers, but they promised to be here. Mr. Lawrence has also committed for April to sponsor our line walk, and our sponsorships for the line walk are $500. So, Lawrence Motorsports is our next sponsor. We're very appreciative of your commitment, but you are getting involved in our community, and you're helping, but you know what? A lot of the things that are going to happen here are big things. They're just these small things, let's just start working together. Come down, hang out with us, see the people that come to Lawrenceburg for a line walk, or for whatever other, but, you know, I mean, certainly we have enough of them here. We want you to do that. And in particular, then, this Friday night, the reason I brought AJ up here, is this creative, ambitious young man who owns Waltz Photography, has got another opportunity to us to better our line walk on Friday night, so I want you to share that.
All right, thank you, Cindy. Good evening. My name is AJ Waltz, I own Waltz Photography, as you just said, I'm down here on Walnut Street, and the line walk is a great event, I'm a big promoter of it, and this month, I am very proud to pronounce, or announce, that this just happened, fresh off the press, we have Olympic medalist Nick... have Olympic medalist Nick Gepper coming down here. I worked some connections, got him to come down. It'd be a great event to come down, bring your families, introduce them to them and show some of that small-town pride I know we have. It's good of you to put political stuff to the side and come down and be with the community and we who elected you there and who pay taxes in this community. We would like to see your faces there, it's a great event to show people and to get to put some support with him as well. Thank you.
And also, part of the wine lock thing for Friday night, the Mardi, it's a Mardi Gras and I am billing this as the biggest Mardi Gras party in southeast Indiana on March 7th, because in Chucky is the only Mardi Gras party in southeast Indiana on March the 7th.
I'll get you a giant one, big bird.
So, I don't think anyone can dispute it, but you know, in our own little inimitable way, we will have a police car, Maya was working on this for me, a police car with the siren and the flashing light, and then John Johnson in a truck pulling a flatbed with Jimmy Thomas playing New Orleans music and Nick Gepper. And then behind that, the Boogie Nights bus with the Boogie Nights girls and a closing police car. I tried to get Maya to drive this golf cart, he just won't do it. But you know what, again, it's all about, we have the ability and we see that we can bring people here. If we can just figure out how to make this downtown better, we have a ton of input, a ton of people who want to help, who want it to be better. And we all have a lot invested.
If it warms up enough, he might drive his golf cart.
It's above freezing Friday. I, I have prayed to the weather gods for weeks now, it will be above freezing Friday.
Tell him, you have to tell him.
I'm working on it. All right, anyway.
We have five minutes.
Thank you.
Somebody that wants to talk.
Give me two, please. The reason of the last, you know, maybe a conclusion, I think a lot of us that are in business still down here in Lawrenceburg, we're here probably because of the event, the event center. We love downtown, but we realize what the event center brings to us. If they, the estimates are correct, if there's 70,000 people gonna be going through that event center in the first year, if we get 5%, that's 3,000 people going through our store that we've never seen before in all our stores. That's a big hit. And the way we bring people in and continue when they come down to these conventions and make sure they schedule another convention, you've got everything to offer, you're only 15 minutes from the airport, it's probably closer than downtown Cincinnati. You've got the Creation Museum on the way, you've got the Lawrenceburg Speedway, you've got Perfect North Slopes, you've got golf courses all over the place. The only thing we need to do is fix up downtown. Because I'll tell you, when we sit here at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night in the wintertime and downtown looks like a morgue, I mean, it's deserted down here, and we look across the street and see deserted buildings, empty buildings, no life whatsoever. Why am I coming down here and coming back? That's what we need to fix up. So, we thank you for your time. Leave you with that.
We have three minutes left in the long run. Paul?
You've got three minutes. Paul?
All right, I need a minute. Guys, I'm not mad about the money. It wasn't about the money. I turned an application in early 2012, count the months. I sit back and watched and waited and watched and waited and made an investment and did my thing here, and I hope the group in the future will be more considerate. And watched somebody go recruit people that never even put in applications. It wasn't about the money, it's about the process to get the money. You know, I went through a process and it was a two-year process and it's just now coming to an end. In the future, when you have people come to invest money in this town, show them that you're interested, show them that you want them to participate and you want to deal with them. For somebody to sit in my shoes and watch what happened the last month and a half, it flat-out pissed me off. Honestly. That's it.